...would be shown. Uh, I just want to announce that Jeff Virgway will be sitting in for, as a temporary clerk, taking place of Kate Cottis' body, so vacation, so.
Okay. Adequate notice, the meeting was provided in accordance with Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, the Senator Byron M. Bear, Open Public Meetings Act.
If we can take a moment of silence. Okay, could we please stand, Commissioner Russo, lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
What do you do, a little call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Pearson?
Present.
Commissioner Musa?
Here.
Commissioner Capizola? Commissioner Saleo?
Here.
Commissioner Loz's excuse? Deputy Director Romero?
Here.
Director Oliver?
Here.
With motion of second, you can accept the acceptance of the reading of the last meeting in the last public meeting.
Two.
Second.
Voice vote all those in favor?
All favor. Do you want to read the first part of this?
Sure, I can, uh, we can make a motion to accept the correspondence as summarized in the agenda, or I can read it out aloud for the record.
Which would be preferred?
I would like you to read that.
Okay. In a letter dated June 21st, 2023, Atlantic City Electric informed the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of notice of filing and public hearing in matter of petition of Atlantic City Electric Company for approval of amendments to its tariff to provide for increasing rates and charges for electric service pursuant to NJSA 48-2-21 and NJSA 48:2-21.21 and for other appropriate relief, OAL docket number PUC 02235-23S, BPU docket number ER 23020091. Second one, in a letter dated July 6th, 2023, Atlantic City Electric informed the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of order dated June 29th, 2023, and effective July 3rd, 2023, extending the suspension period of proposed revisions to November 15th, 2023 in the matter of the petition of Atlantic City Electric Company for approval of amendments to its tariff to provide for an increase in rates and charges for electric service pursuant to NJSA 48:2-21 and 48:2-21.21 and for other appropriate relief, OAL docket number PUC 0223523S, BPU docket number ER 23020091. And the third, in a letter dated July 7th, 2023, the Cape May County Board of County Commissioners informed the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of Resolution 4292-23 adopted at a formal meeting held on June 27th, 2023 urging the state of New Jersey to enact an equitable and transparent school funding formula. And I just want to note that Commissioner Capizola entered and is now present. And the fourth matter, the Monmouth County Board of County Commissioners informed the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of Resolution 2023-3538 adopted at a formal meeting held on July 13th, 2023 opposing the removal of $200 million for the municipal health benefit cost relief. And in the final matter, in a letter dated July 17th, 2023, Richland City Mayor Albert Kelly responded to an inquiry made by the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners regarding broadband service within the city of Richland and provided a status as two levels of coverage and service providers within Richland.
Mr. Carr, on the two, the first two Atlantic Electric requests of these, have they responded to any of our requests about, uh, written letters to them? Just trying to remember exactly, but I think we had a problem with how their service or to help us with the courthouse, the wires, I believe. Have they responded to any of that at all?
At current, we have no ongoing communication with them.
Uh, should we consider the, Johnson, should we consider the idea that they're writing to get a rate increases? Do we make a comment about this through the BBU about their response to us as far as, is that something we should do now? I remember all the ins and outs about what we were to write a letter to Atlantic Electric, but it was about their service.
Sure. So, uh, BPU law is, um, Byzantine. That's the word I used. So, uh, the issue that we have repeatedly with them is moving their service when it's in the public right away, and we're trying to conduct a project, and we have litigated with them multiple times.
So should we now write a letter?
Now would be the time to write it, if you're going to write it. I can't say that it would make any difference, but you would have to express it.
Put it on the record that, you know, they want to get more money for services provided, and we've asked for help, not just us, the CCIA is here, they've asked for help with Atlantic Electric to help speed projects along, and they've delayed, so maybe it's time for a couple of counties to put it in writing to these guys.
Try to put something together.
Is that okay? I got a little bit. So, all right. Thank, thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Pearson?
They want to accept, uh, all favor, accepting the, as read.
All over.
All favor?
All right.
All right, and now we have a presentation to honor the youth of, you want to take this here, Commissioner Pearson?
Honoring the youth feliciter, District 2, Unit 15, from the Order of the Eastern Star, Prince Hall affiliated from the State of New Jer, State and jurisdiction of New Jersey.
Would you mind coming on up to?
Where do you go? Which way do we? Good evening, everyone. Um, want to, how do I start? There are so many things going on in this world today, and we end up hearing always all of the bad stuff. We don't hear the good stuff. Everybody's doing something that they don't want to hear about. Well, we have a group of young ladies here this evening who are members of the Youth Feliciter, and they are represented by the Order of the Eastern Star. It was the old grand chapter, Order of the Eastern Star, and I told them to correct me if I'm making mistakes. I made that clear. Okay, and they are, it's a statewide organization under the auspices of the Order of the Eastern Star, Prince Hall affiliation. And this is a group of young ladies that are members of the Youth Feliciter, and their job and responsibility is to be service, to learn how, just to be great people. And these young ladies have been amazing. First time, I believe, in state history, the state presidency is in this district. And we have the queen, the person who raises the most funds and does the best thing, right here in Cumberland County, and her court, and I'm going to call them her court because they are the other offices of the organization, but I just wanted to recognize what they do. Sometimes people, particularly young men, young women, don't realize that whatever they do, it matters. It matters now, and it matters in the long run. And I want you all to know that you all have done an amazing job, and you have made so many people very proud of you. So I want you all to come up, caide, and if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, tell me. I understand you will do that, that she will take charge, that she is leader. She is the president of the Youth Feliciter, and she has done an amazing job. I understand that you stepped in when you didn't have to and literally took the show over. It's amazing what these young women can do, and I just want them to understand, you continue to do that and continue the leadership. Next, we have Alora Gilbert Chu. She's president of Unit 15. That is the local chapter of Youth Feliciter. We have Amani Braxton. She's the marshal for Unit 15. I think she's a little shyer than the rest of the girls, but she is the mascot. Then we have Janai Frazier, who incidentally has a broken leg, which I understand she received during her tour of duty as a youth feliciter. She was participating in a project and, what, fell? Mm-hmm. Well, look at her. She's here with her cast on, real trooper. And we have what is called the mascot, and that is Jaleah. Frasier, Jaleah, come on up. Now, this group of young ladies participate in a lot of projects, and they not only assist with food distribution, they have a garden. They do a community garden that's located in Glassboro, and all the produce that they get from this garden goes to the food pantry at the community garden, food pantry in Keeling Wings Pentecostal Church located in Glassboro. And they go to the veterans home, they have presented socks and razors and all kinds of good things. And they also join the local chapters of distributing Thanksgiving baskets, Christmas. They just do a lot of work. Every time I turn around, the phone is blowing up with the work that you all are doing, and I'm just, I'm very proud of you, and I'm going to have to say that.
I'm proud of you.
They enjoy the wonderful job. So, on behalf of the board of commissioners here in the county, we'd like to just present you with this recognition, just recognizing the work that you do. And again, as I said, what you do matters. It really does. It matters now. It will matter in the future. It will matter forever. And you have a lot of people who are calling for you, knowing that you're doing an awesome job. This is just the beginning. It's just the beginning, and this is just one, and I'd like to see many, many more. Okay? You all are awesome and amazing. So, Ms. Braxton, president? Janai? The young ladies have something they'd like to present to the board. They have some of their produce, and they would leave it here for anyone who would like to have peppers and string beans. And what is that? Okay, so type of lettuce. All right, all right, ladies. Congratulations and thank you all. Okay, and there has to be the, their sponsors. This is not an easy job, working with the youth in this county. Everybody works, everybody has a job, but I really would like to recognize their adult sponsors because they've been with these girls 24/7, up and down the road. The weather was horrible today, and people were canceling events, and I thought, oh my gosh, they're not going to be able to make it. And what? In here, right? And you make the sun come out. So I'd like to recognize, um, Carmen Jackson, the District 2 chairperson. You just stand up. Frasier Bonner is the co-chairperson. Karen Harris and Julia Burris-Narrow are co-chairpersons. Our number of sponsors, but I don't see any of them here this. Cheyenne? Which one?
Melinda.
Melinda, thank you. Well, Melinda Braxton. We need them all, okay? Now, the following sponsors, Ms. Albert Frazier, Ms. Melinda Braxton, Ms. Carl Randolph, Ms. Dominique Ellis, Ms. Natasha Randolph, and Ms. Cheyenne Santiago. And the one who pulls all of us together, makes sure all of us have this strength, who reached out to the county and took care of everything, Pamela Blunt Elliott. She is what is called the new district deputy grand major, and she runs all of this. So thank you all so much for what you do. You don't know how much is appreciated. You all are pillars in the community, and you're raising these young ladies to be the same. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. You want to take it? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I want to take this. Your whole is right. We'll leave it so anyone wishing to partake of this wonderful bounty. There is jalapeno peppers in here, too.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you, ladies, very much.
Now, we, uh, the, I guess, can we open it to public comment? They're holding for the residents, it's all the agenda.
Director, we have the broadband presentation before.
We have the broadband, okay, perfect. So we're not going to the public, the public comment. We're going to actually do talk about the broadband. There's a lot of questions. We have people in the room that can answer them. If not, we'll make notes of questions and try to get answers to those. So, who would like to do first? Jerry? Ned Darwin? Yeah. So Jerry Velazquez is CCIA, and, uh, this is being, uh, being, uh, live streamed, and will be on Facebook, so, uh, is there any other avenues that it goes on, you know? Okay. So, and it can be seen and reviewed, so.
So while Jeff's doing that, um, as Commissioner Albrecht said, I'm Jerry Velazquez with the Improvement Authority, Dominic Velikos with VCOM. Many of you have seen us before making presentations here with respect to the broadband. Um, we received a lot of questions, answered a lot of questions, not only from the residents, but also from NTIA. So the process of submission and then receipt of the $24 million grant was probably six, seven months long. We probably answered, I don't know, at least 25 to 30 different questions and sent back budget modifications, clarifications. And so there were about 260 national applications. Thirty-five of them were funded throughout the country. I'd like to remind everybody this is a federal grant, so there's been some discussion about taxpayer, um, taxpayer, taxpayer payments and taxpayer money. This is federal money, so no matter who receives it, if Hawaii receives the money, we still pay. If Colorado pays the money, we still pay. Mindy says we're still paying. Yes, we are. If this $24 million went to Ohio, we would still pay. So my feeling is, if we're paying, we should benefit. So $24 million is requested, $24 million was received. Um, I'll flip through this. This has been something we've, we've shown everyone before. Uh, there's two, sorry, Jeff, next, next one. Two counties, as you know, Salem and Cumberland. Um, there's, there was $1 billion in funding, as I mentioned before, creating a fiber off the grid, Rock, Cumberland and Salem, which are connected. The project total at the time of this was $29.7 million. The actual project total ended up being about $34 million. Uh, next slide. Network backbone, which is part of this project, which is, connects the, the middle mile to the initial location, coming from the west to Salem, and then from the east to Cumberland. Uh, this project's for middle mile, so this will connect the two counties via fiber throughout the two counties, and it will connect the public, uh, infrastructure, the critical, um, community locations. And then the last mile connects the service from the middle mile, which goes directly to the houses of business, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, project benefits, faster, more reliable internet in Cumberland and Salem County, strengthening cellular communication, bolstering the E91. This came up many times, many questions about the 911. Certainly, this is not a 911 project, but if you can communicate, if our public servants and our emergency personnel can communicate better in the outer line areas of the county, and obviously, it makes our 911 response better. But just for clarity, this is not a 911 project. Uh, connecting anchor institutions, which I mentioned before, and creating a more competitive environment. As many of you know, um, competition's very narrow with respect to who you can choose for middle mile, for last mile, so this enhances our ability to get public providers to connect. The middle mile is going to be implemented because obviously, it's less expensive to connect our middle mile, don't have to pay the capital cost, and that allows for other entities who are not currently providing services in Cumberland County to provide last mile services. Uh, next one, Jeff. There's 88 and a half miles in Cumberland, 64.3 miles in Salem. These are estimates at the time of the application, and still, we don't know exactly where the lines are going. Uh, we haven't received the money yet, so we haven't hired engineers. We haven't hired folks to come out and do the final investigation and the analysis. So right now, these are estimates. They remain estimates. We can't spend money until we have it. Uh, 14.6 miles to connect both counties, uh, 48 miles to connect ring with data center points of presence, integrates anchor institutions, which I mentioned before, integrates with 911. Uh, the next slide is a FCC map which shows most of the counties covered. I think all of you know, based on your current experience, that this is not the case. Um, we are working with BPU. The BPU had hired a company to go out and actually walk, uh, the county, and they'll be providing us with an actual boots-on-the-ground map. That will be coming up in the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping. I was hoping it happened before this meeting, but they can't release the map yet, so the map will be released shortly, and I'll share that with everyone, obviously. Um, part of the problem that we have is the rules allow for providers to claim areas that are served that are not provided for service. So if Susie has service in this part of the census tract, and on the opposite side of the census tract, Joe doesn't have service, then Joe's claimed as having service because he's in the state census tract. So that's the problem with the FCC data. Um, FCC's refining mapping, and as I said before, BPU's going to refine and give us information. FCC's refining mapping, and as I said before, BPU's going to refine and give us information that they did, they hired someone to do that. Next slide. As I mentioned before, it's about $34 million. It includes engineering, design, environmental assessments, construction, and other project implementation costs. There is a required match of 30%. Each of the counties is responsible for its own match. It's a 55-45 split. That's based on total fiber and then you divide by each county, so each county gets proportionate share. So it's 55-45 Cumberland with 55 Salem and 45. And then obviously, I mentioned before, the OEM investment was used as matching, as matching fund to the actual cash match for Cumberland is $3.8 million and the cash match for Salem is $3.1 million. Project schedule, next slide, Jeff. Again, we still have to do the design, have to put agreements together for whomever's going to operate, maintain the middle mile. Agreements for obviously who's going to build out the middle mile, that'll be bid processed. Agreements for ISP, last mile providers, so all of these things have to be worked out. Obviously, construction, as I said before, that would just be a public project, it's too large, so we'll put plans and specs together, we'll bid it out. There probably will be many different contractors, at least two, that'll be working on this project. Just too large of a project to be done by one entity. And then we talked about a last mile integration and then a weekly 24-month completion. We've had a conversation, we've had a lot of conversations with BPU, NJBPU. As you know, the state received $263 or $65 million from the federal government through the BE program, which is a middle mile and last mile program. We will participate in that program. We received word from the BPU that Cumberland and Salem be part of an initial pilot, so there's six communities that were chosen. Cumberland and Salem is part of an initial pilot as a result of our communications, kind of where we are with respect to our middle mile and the progress that we've made, so that's good news. There's $50 million that's set aside for the initial pilot and that's in addition to the $260 million that the state received for the BE program. The next slide, the scoring criteria. We received the grant, so if we can skip through this, we can skip through the next one. And then potential partnerships, municipalities, obviously local internet service providers, wireless internet providers, national internet service providers. We received a letter from T-Mobile indicating that it would like to participate. I received a letter from the City of Island, or we received a letter from the City of Island saying it would like to participate. We received verbal from other ISP providers that didn't want us to provide a letter but have indicated since we received, parts are receiving and since we received it, they definitely want to participate with respect to last mile provision of the middle mile. So we talked about wireless, national internet providers, and then the project for way smaller ISP, so obviously again, the focus, the function and the mission of the middle mile is to provide more service throughout the counties, the two counties, to make sure that folks have internet. We've done many surveys, we did 2020, 2030 plan, we've done business surveys. In all cases, one of the top five priorities for the businesses in county has been infrastructure, which includes broadband, electric's another one, but broadband is just as important. Obviously during COVID, we know how many folks couldn't get to school, couldn't have, didn't have access. So we learned the hard way that broadband and internet service in the outer line communities is very, very important to our two communities, Cumberland and Salem. Next slide. There's just a breakdown, this is taken directly from the budget. This is included, it's in the document, it just goes through. You can scroll down, Jeff. We expect a 24-month performance period, all the way down, all the way down. Project cost is 34, 538. The federal request is 24, which is what we received. Total match, total cash match requirement is 6.9, 55-45 split. Total matching funds, in kind, those were the towers that exist, were the towers that were going to be installed. So that was money that was already either spent or set aside for those purposes by each of the counties. Total matching funds was $10.3 million, which is 30%. So that's the summary of the project. Obviously, Dominic, you want to talk about any particular specifics or you want to go to questions or does the commission have any questions?
Would you mind go right to questions? This way we're not wasting, we can actually get, okay. Does anyone in the audience like ask questions? This is a good period of time to start and just.
Could we move to open public comment on the presentation and then still treat the resolutions as a separate?
Okay, can we?
There's going to be a public meeting on the 15th of August.
So this is a good chance to ask questions and if we don't, don't answer, or we could come back and be ready on the 15th to answer that question or hopefully before that to answer the question. Could we, could I have a motion to open up for public discussion on the broadband, the middle mile project presentation? Second. All favor? All right, so we'll open it up. The four questions, just state your name and where you're from and five minutes, leave me five minutes and we can always come back to. What's that? Can you let them have access to the podium at least?
Mindy Pachani, Hopewell Township. You've kind of brushed through the whole presentation as the one convoluted thing. With respect to the middle mile, how does that specific fiber ring increase internet speed? Isn't that a product of the internet service provider and the package that they purchased?
Did they give a chance to answer the question?
This is a dark fiber network. There's several of these around the United States and California, Illinois, Massachusetts, a few other states. It's a dark fiber network. What it does is, it enables other providers to be able to extend the network at a lower cost so they can get access to areas that are unserved or underserved today.
Correct. You have to have an internet service provider though, to light this thing up.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any contracts or any commitments as to who those providers are?
Mr. Velazquez already walked through a lot of the commitments. There were a couple of letters that were, there were letters that were submitted with the application. One of which was with T-Mobile. As you've seen, T-Mobile's got commercials all over the place where they're offering 5G home internet access.
T-Mobile's mobile broadband, correct?
Fixed wireless access, yes. And.
And that needs towers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, does the county have towers currently?
The application has, the tower is part of the like-kind match that's in there, includes access to all the county-owned towers in both counties. The fiber will run to each one of those towers and what'll happen is, since if you go through the application, it also goes to two points of presence or two POPs where it'll connect to the internet. So companies like T-Mobile and other companies, and presumably the other wireless carriers will follow as well, can connect at those two POPs and end at, say, one of these county towers and then provide service from those towers.
Okay, is there wire currently going to our towers?
Is there wire currently going to the towers?
Fiber optic line?
Some towers there are, some towers there aren't.
There is, it's Verizon.
Some there are, some there are.
Verizon currently owns a network in the area, so does Comcast and so does Crown Castle. So we have fiber in Cumberland and Salem County.
Well, it's interesting because the map that was on the presentation, while it shows the whole thing green, there's only about a third of that area that's green is actually covered by multiple providers according to the FCC 477s. So two-thirds of that area is one provider. And so they're not, so Crown Castle's not at every tower, Comcast is not at every tower, and Verizon's not at every tower. So they might be at some towers and they're in some of the more populated areas, of course, but they're certainly not in the areas that are less populated.
Comcast confirmed they have service throughout the whole entire county. I have a letter from the president, that's not.
So I'm going to say, yeah, I don't want to, actually, we're going to stop, we're not going to go back and forth. Ask questions, Mr. Pachoni, just ask questions and we'll get answers to it.
There's no way you can say Comcast provides service to this entire county.
All right.
There are FCC applications, as it does.
So if you don't mind, ask your questions. If you want to ask, follow question five, we'll do that, no problem. But let us answer, if we don't, if it's not satisfactory, that's fine, it's not satisfactory, but at least let us answer and if there's more details we have to find, we'll do that for you. So you asked a question about it, we disagree with that, that, I'll leave it quiet for now, but we disagree with that, so the other questions besides the tower issue that.
Is it the time for questions on the 15th?
Yeah.
I mean, isn't, the 15th was the time, I thought was the time for questions.
All right, but we have.
Mr. Director, I do, I do agree with that. I think that there are people here who have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns and the presentation again is an overview of this. I think there's going to be a more detailed presentation on the 15th and public and then really get into it and have a discussion about it.
All right, so that makes sense. Mr. Pachoni, if you ask, follow the question, but if there are other people in the audience who like to ask questions, could you let them do it? If there's something else you would like, I would happily let them answer. I do, I do consider it as an open forum just for a little while. The 15th is the, it will be the bigger meeting, five hours put aside, there'll be back and forth and answer questions, but we're starting.
Salem commissioners can hear the questions and the answers to it. That's actually just the thought.
Something's standing. I think Mindy meant more, and I'm not going to read through Mindy's, but she probably meant that Comcast covers both of the middle mile and that's, and that's a fact. And maybe that's what she meant, because if I go down to town in Marvise River and Fairland area and Deerfield and Commercial and Forest View, you'll find out that there is nobody there. Those are the people that I really, really, really like to see them get service. And I think that's where Mindy is coming with, that maybe she meant Verizon and Comcast cover most of the middle mile and that's what we're talking about, not the county. You know, because there's more uncovered area than the county, in the county than there is covered if you take out Vine.
But it's also offering choices for people. I live in Hopewell, I don't, I don't have the option for Verizon internet. I don't have the option, I have, I have to choose Comcast because that's all that's available.
Right, as a commissioner, I look at the whole county because there's people that don't even have any Wi-Fi or any broadband or anything. And that's why Mindy is trying to really represent. I don't, you know, I'm not looking out for what I have, I have a choice, but some people don't have any.
But he's also, and Mindy doesn't have a choice either, so.
I think, I think, because I'm a teacher, I don't really have time to look at my bills and I just put this on the internet last month. My bill was $375. Maybe you get busy and you forget to look at your bills and I'm like, I started looking into maybe switching and I don't have any other options.
Mine today was $445.
So, all right. Here's the thing, I think Lisa Pachoni's looking here, she's done a lot of work. I said, well, the authority has done a lot of work. I think what we need to do as commissioners is to corroborate all the information that has been served to Lisa Pachoni by the CCIA and VCOM and look at other positions on running a middle mile and then make a intelligent, hopefully intelligent decision.
I would like to have some more information too. And if we're going to go into the 15th, hopefully, hopefully we'll get that information before then, maybe all of us will have questions based on good information, good solid.
With all due respect, Commissioner Pearson, I have submitted questions, we've been copied on them, and I also submitted them to the Salem Commissioners on July 10th, okay? I'd like to get an answer.
That's my question, that's my question. I don't know all the information, so I can't answer anything. And, you know, I just can't do it and I don't feel, I don't feel completely informed and that's the God's honest truth. I respect your opinion, I just don't have enough information to give people that.
I understand, but it's like two weeks, someone should have come up with some of the answers. I went through this last fall when it was originally presented. My main concern is, what's the number of unserved? No one has ever specifically said who's unserved and where, and that's the starting point, that's the problem. We have a solution that we're trying to find a problem.
Okay, again, I don't want to cap this back and forth discussion, but I just saw, I heard that they were boots on the ground to try to get that information and that's why I want that information here, so thank you. I do appreciate, I do.
The FCC communication website has a broadband back area that you can download each specific provider and where they're at. If you're an internet service provider, you also have access to all the addresses that are not serviced in that area. The data was recently updated, July 21st of 2020.
Mr. Pachoni, do you, do you agree that we had an issue during the code that we couldn't communicate, that a lot of people couldn't get internet?
I do, I'm for internet.
No, 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 I'm asking a question.
No, there was, there was.
So is there any solution that would work to get to those people at all that you think would be appropriate?
It's getting the last mile coverage, that's where we lack.
Well, no, not necessarily the last mile, the bottom line is that there are people that we had to set up hotspots and that had to go to libraries and do their job or go to a store where they had internet service. So, I mean, you're saying the last mile, but you're talking the HOV, I'm assuming you're thinking the HOV, correct?
HOV businesses, that's the last mile coverage.
Okay, but right now, if our, if, I don't want to backflip, but the middle mile, don't we have to get, just create a system that we can get to the end mile and right?
In our area.
I just answered your question, you just told me that there are people that didn't have it.
The middle mile.
No, no, don't worry about the middle mile, didn't you just say to me, I asked you a simple question, did people not have service during?
Last mile, yes, correct.
The last one, I said they didn't. So how do we get to the end mile if you don't do the middle mile to help get there?
We have fiber in our area that services that. You have to get your internet service providers, which should be through this BE grant.
Yeah, we don't have the BE grant, we have a middle mile project.
But it's coming, it's coming.
But we have the middle mile that's been presented to us, that we have a bird, thing in the hand, $24 million given to it to create a middle mile to shorten the distance, shorten the distance to get to Delaware and get to, actually Atlantic City to Philadelphia, is we've got money to do that, which we, right now, we rely on service providers who aren't doing what they said they're going to do. Right now, Hopewell, Hopewell is paying to have their service brought into. Why is it not being provided? Moore City Township is paying to bring that in, why are they providing that?
Because they want to guarantee that each house is going to get wired to it, that's why, that's why they partner.
Okay.
And one thing they raised my attention was that $24 million, if we don't use that, that's just going to go to another community?
Yes, sir. It's federal money.
It's federal money, so.
But it's not going to go to another community, nobody's, I don't think.
I would say that it, there's 265 applications, the next one in line, I would say.
You can accept the $24 million, but not use it and then if you don't use it in the time frame, it goes back.
I think, just a couple of things, I think it's important that everybody understands and so there are questions that we're never going to be able to answer, right? So Mindy came up here and asked about contracts and agreements. We don't have contracts and agreements because we didn't have money. We still don't have money until the commissioners decide that you're going to move forward with the $24 million. We can't enter into contracts, we, the county, because it's the county Salem, county Cumberland is going to be entering into contracts. You cannot enter into contracts until you have a system in place and until you've agreed to the money. So you're going to have 55 people come up here and ask for an agreement and we cannot provide one because we simply haven't done that work. Exactly where the middle mile's going, we have a line on the map, that's our best information at the time. We didn't do the engineering. There are, there are roadways, there are bridges, there are environmental areas that we have to take into account, that we didn't take the time to do because we didn't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars to get that done. So there's going to be a ton of questions that we're never going to answer, so I want to make sure everyone is clear of. so I wanna make sure everyone is clear of the expectations, right? And, and we talk about the middle mile, and the middle mile exists. If you, you Commissioners believe that Comcast has done a super job with the middle mile that it owns, and it's allowing other participants to hook on to their middle mile, you make that decision. I don't know, I'm not gonna say yes or no, but the existing middle mile that exists with Verizon and Comcast are not available to other ISPs. So, so all these questions that you're, that there's an expectation of, I just wanna be clear on the fifteenth, 'cause I'm gonna sit up here and I'm gonna say, I don't have a contract, I don't have an agreement today, on the fifteenth, and probably for another several months. So, I don't, I don't want everybody to think that we're gonna get to the fifteenth and be able to answer a lot of these questions.
Can we, Commissioner Rivera has a question.
Jerry, I agree with you 100%, but I'm gonna tell you something. The reason we're in this trouble right now is because we cannot rely on Verizon and Comcast, and I want you to know that, for since the 60s, when they started building the system, they always neglected the end mile. They has always neglected that. And I worked 20 years for the cable company, I designed Miami Cable. And I can tell you from experience that you guys used to say, well, it's gonna cost us $70,000 in those days, $70,000 to get to that point. If we get there, how many years it's gonna take for that to pay back all of the system by then? We'll never see profit. So, I want you guys to understand, all of you, that this is all created by bad service given to us by Comcast and, and Horizon, because they have neglected us. And, but that doesn't mean that this $25 million is gonna take care of Miami either, and that's what I'm really concerned about. I'm not concerned about giving violent competition in our bills to go down, that would be very selfish as a Commissioner for me to say that. You know, I am, I am really looking into the poor people who had closed libraries, that couldn't go to anywhere to get Wi-Fi, so their kids get educated and do their homework. This is what I am concerned about, and this is what we should all be looking at. Not as a second business for any other community. We should be looking at this, about the people, and the poor people out there by the water that never got the service, lost a year of education, and this is why the $25 million was put into, so it could be used in a good way. And, and you know, we, you know, I want you to understand that, whether there's, I'd like to ask Jerry one question. Do you have paperwork on that $50 million that is coming? Is it really a guaranteed money? Is there, is there gonna be something here that I could promise those people down at the bottom of the end mile? When that middle mile gets built, that you're gonna service that, is there a guarantee to these people? Because if there's no guarantee, then that $25 million is already being offered by the government. I, you know, and, and that's the way I...
The purpose of, the purpose of the middle mile, as you correctly indicated, so it's a business decision by Comcast and Verizon to connect to certain areas where they're gonna make money, simple as that. The additional connections that are being made in Maurice and Hopewell are a function of the government giving Comcast a subsidy to run a line, to have a customer forever.
Is that a guaranteed money? This is where I'm getting it.
I'm gonna get you, I'm gonna get you there.
Okay.
The, the specific mission and objective of this project, the middle mile, is to provide low-cost middle mile to ISP providers so they can run lines to folks that would never, ever have a line run to their home, because it wouldn't be cost-effective because of the cost, the capital cost of the middle mile. The B money that's coming to the state, 263 million, that's in addition to the $50 million pilot. The $50 million pilot is ARPA money that was set aside for six communities. We're one of six communities. In addition to the $50 million, there's another 260 million that we would have access to. Can I tell you, it's gonna be four, five, six, two, 10 million? I don't know that yet, but I know we're gonna be part of the first pilot for last mile to the residents in our community.
Mr. Lasker, wouldn't, isn't the middle mile enhanced that, if we get those $50 million, would the middle mile enhance that, that we would be able to connect to that and get closer to whatever area we're gonna go into?
Yeah, so the beauty of having the middle mile money is we can use 100% of the B money for last mile, yes.
And, and some of the points that people have said, a failure of these systems is, when government, if a government does not do it well, is to actually light up that end mile, do it ourselves. Everything I've read, everything, could you mute, could you mute your phone, please?
On you, that one, okay.
Is it that, I mean, everything that's been presented, that I've seen failures of systems, is actually the government doing the end mile, lighting it up itself?
Yeah, the intent here is for, for the county, the two counties, to implement the infrastructure, hire, find an entity to run, operate, maintain the middle mile, and then that same entity...
Could you please mute your phone?
Yeah.
Hello? Can you, can you mute?
That 856 number's talking, that's us.
So, 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 so let me answer, Commissioner. So, so, jumping, whatever. So, Commissioner, yes, the answer is yes. The whole, the, the point of this is, we know what we can, and we know what we can't do. There are folks out there that are willing and able to take on the middle mile responsibility from an operations, maintenance perspective, take the calls, make the repairs, which we never intended, it's not in the application at all, it's never intended. And then they would also market the last mile and sell the last mile. And the counties, the two counties, would have the jurisdiction and the decision on what it sells for, who gets hired, what their roles and what their scope is. All of that is to be determined. So, again, that was all part of the application and clearly delineated that the counties would not be operating the middle mile.
Jerry, going back to your map over here. This is, uh, this is the middle line, in black right here, right?
That's correct.
Right? This is the end mile. This is why we're here today. Most of these people, none of, only some are here. These areas are people that live there that doesn't have the service, right? I think this is what these people are here and concerned about. I mean, we could talk about this middle mile, you could convince me, if you could guarantee me that all these people will have service then, but this, this is, this is, guys, this is what we're here for. We're not here because my kids got Wi-Fi. I'm worrying about those kids that don't have Wi-Fi, and I keep saying kids, because that's a soft point. Education, this is why a lot of people spend the whole year without. I don't care about the $24 million, that $60 million, and I'm, I'm caring about these kids right here getting, getting service.
Mr. Rivera.
If we cannot give those kids service, which deserves a purpose. And that's what I'm concerned about.
That is the purpose, sir.
So, as the hardest you're fighting for that middle mile, I need you guys to really fight for the end mile.
We're fighting for the middle mile, because that was the money that was available. And now we're fighting for the last mile, because that's our...
And I think what's important...
Can we go over the middle mile to be over here then?
But, Mr. Rivera, you're generalizing, because the bottom, no, because there are places in Bridgeton...
I come from, I've come from cable for 20 years.
There are places in Bridgeton that don't have service. There's places in Fairfield that aren't the circle area you're doing. You're generalizing, everything is on the bottom, it's not.
We're talking about 97% is already coming.
There's places in violent... So, so you're generalizing the serving area.
Well, also, if I can, Commissioner, Director, if I can, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Silvia.
Give me a week, I'll send you the data.
Again, assuming, assuming that this project is delivered on budget, will you ever be able to tell this board how much that system is gonna cost to maintain subsequent to the time?
I can guarantee the board, there's at least one ISP provider that is guaranteed, told me to tell you, that he, that they will guarantee a match and the cost, so the county will have zero cost and no match.
So, by a shared services agreement of some type, you have a provider that will pay all expenses of this system if, in fact, it is awarded, if this group agrees to it, and if it is delivered on budget, that there's a provider that will pay all of the expenses of that on behalf of this board?
Yes.
Okay, so you kinda, you kinda stole my point, but thank you. So, the point of, a couple of points actually I wanted to make is that, one, again, I wanna corroborate, a lot of the information is being served from the public and also from our vendors at this point, and also the authority. But number two, the, what the business initiative just mentioned is that, if we accept this grant, like I said to Johnny earlier, you can use it, but you don't necessarily have to use it. But you're telling us that, in so many words, that there's so many major problems to you. Okay, alright, that's on tape, guys, thanks.
Alright, alright, now it's...
Well, I just wanna make that, make that...
Comments to this board?
Right, well, but it's on tape. But here's the point, and number three, is that the cable line that you would run, this might be more personal to you.
Sure.
Is that, the old Comcast lines that are running their middle line, they are, I guess, antiquated, they're about, what, 30, 40, maybe 50 years old?
Probably Comcast has a, what's known as a HFC or Hybrid Fiber Coaxial Network, so in your house, it's delivered on coaxial cable, not actually fiber?
That's the copper.
That's the copper, yeah, the little, you know, coaxial cable that you screw into your cable box or your remote.
So, what advantages do we gain by, and I know with fiber, it's a lot faster, strand sizes and so forth, I think it's about 70, 20...
1728 was...
1720, 14, something like that, right? So, with that said, are we gaining a, and I'm not looking to do a GOA, alright? Well, GOA is government-owned network. I'm not looking to do that ever, in this, in this calendar. But are we gaining a advantage over Comcast and other cable companies by putting the new line on?
Well, there's a significant advantage. So, the Pew organization put out a report, and they call it the Open Access Middle Mile. So, this is what we're talking about here for these two counties. And what we've heard earlier was that Comcast and Verizon have middle mile, we've heard that a bunch. But it's not open access, it's not open to anyone. So, I heard $300 cable bill, I heard a $400 cable bill. You've got, the last mile is certainly in the areas along the fringe, but last mile's everywhere in the county. So, if you get another provider that comes in, besides serving those areas on the fringe, what you do is you've got the opportunity in these other areas to lower your bill. I lived in Cherry Hill for 30 years, I had both Verizon and Comcast, and I would switch every two years, and my bill was 30% lower than my father-in-law's five miles away. It's a game, that's up. But that's what, so that's the advantage that you get, though.
Well, my question is, seriously, the fiber optic line, if we use it...
Well, I'm serious about that.
Alright, if we, if we start digging tomorrow, would it be a better product than what cable that Comcast and Verizon use? But Verizon uses fiber optics.
Up, yeah, Verizon, they both use fiber optics. Comcast uses fiber optics too, absolutely.
So, there's no advantage of being fiber optic at Verizon?
The, I don't know exactly how many, how much capacity they have in their network, but what would happen is there would be significant capacity with this network because of the number of strands. And the thing is, with the newest technology on this, the fiber cable, where you can get 17, think about this, 1,700 fibers in an inch and a quarter cable, 1,700 fibers. 40 years ago, when fibers were going in, in the 80s, you were getting less than that, significantly less than that, and, and technology, they figured out over time how to get more in such a small cable. So, you've got 1,700 fibers that go around the cable, what that does is, that opens it up to T-Mobile, to other ISPs, to, and it shortens that distance. So, how do you get to the last mile? You shorten the distance to get to the last mile, so that that last mile cost, all of a sudden, the ROI's work for these companies. And this is what this report from the Pew organization says, is that open access middle mile networks have promoted, in California, in Illinois, in Massachusetts, there's a county in Ohio, it's attracted wireless companies, other ISPs, ISPs from around the country, ISPs locally in the area, all of a sudden, they can get access to the whole base, not just the fringe, the whole base. They can get access to the whole base at that point, and it makes sense for them, and all of a sudden, besides serving those fringe areas, you've now lowered your cost 'cause you have real competition throughout both counties.
One more situation, you have one question. The upload and download speeds, I understand it comes to maybe 100, 100, very shortly? Will we be able to do that, running the middle line and then the end line at future date?
Each strand gets over a gigabyte of speed, and you've got 1,700 of them.
Eddie Member, what does student, because we gotta get on to other business, is there any, one question? If you have questions, finish up.
I just wanna say one more thing, it's about creating competition. I feel like that this is what it's gonna do, it's not about my bill, Mr. Rivera, it's about...
It's about you, Jim.
No, Jim, it's about my bill.
Those words, they come out of me, they came out of you.
It's your creation to acquire, I'm the one that was looking at those students for two years on the Internet, and I was the one watching their, their computers shut off.
Well, we need to look at those kids more.
Exactly, so...
So, we need to look at those kids more.
Excuse me, if they can't afford Comcast, that's the point I was trying to make, they might not have the Internet. So, there might be kids that are in violent, in the middle mile, or Millville or Bridgeton, that have Comcast, that could have it, but this might create an opportunity to lower their bills.
Exactly, but you know what? This, this broadband was created to service those kids that we are gonna neglect to the end. And, and that's, and that's what you need to realize. You're worrying about your bill, the bills, and the competition and everything else. I'm worried about those kids that don't have service.
One last statement, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We know I have a question on that.
We have another?
Yeah, sure.
Just stay your name in.
Sandy Acevito, Upper Deerfield Township.
Can you please mute your, your phone, please?
My question is about the correspondence from Albert Kelly, Mayor of Bridgeton. Were there other inquiries made, and if so, to whom, and what were their responses?
I'll take that, I did talk to the mayor, I asked him if there was any areas in his city that would, has issues, and he, and he put it right, he's just the first one, but I did ask the Lawrence Township, I called and spoke to Fairfield, Lawrence Township.
Have they submitted anything in writing to you?
Not yet, that's why you only got one, so, also, I think Commercial Township did it, Commercial. I asked the city of Millville, I don't know if I said something to the city of Violet or not.
Do you think you'll have those responses?
I tried everybody I could, oh, I did call, talk to Hopewell, but they said the CDC would answer for them. So, actually, Tony Stansfield's the responsible writing letter. We haven't got anything, so I'm just like, it was probably a week ago I asked them.
Do you know, do you expect anything back before the...
I hope, I can't answer, I hope, so I just asked them, I asked them for a letter. And how I phrased it was, if there are areas in your community that, general, not detailed, that they don't, you know, I don't need scientific areas that you know, 'cause you live there, and that's how I phrased it, so...
Doug, was that sent by email or just a...
Uh, just a phone call, verbally did, so...
So, maybe you put it in writing, it's all, when they asked it, and it's...
I met with most of those mayors personally, and they are, they, they wanna see, they have those, those, like I said, commercial, they are, those, those, like, that's where the people without service are. And I, so I met with those mayors, and they're very concerned, they want service.
But maybe they have other questions that they can send to us, write to all the...
Is that possible to give away?
Just a basic...
On the fifteenth, maybe you could send them a letter?
Yeah.
And write them on the fifteenth.
We will write a letter, I did it verbally, but we'll write a letter, ask them to follow up, if they can provide a letter.
You just don't want them to say that they never received, or they were never spoken to, and now they have questions, just to have it written and sent to everybody.
We will write a letter and ask each mayor if they want to make any comments in regard to this project and invite them to the meeting on the fifteenth of August.
Okay, so, that's where, that was the purpose, just to see if there were any areas, and only one, one response, which was Mayor Kelly, which I appreciate.
Yeah, the details that maybe, like Bridgeton provided, of their areas, their...
They said they had fifteen entities providing service, and they had now Verizon.
Sorry about that, I didn't, sorry, but I did ask them to, to say their own, because they live there, what areas in their community that they were concerned about, so that's that one, so...
And Jerry, I'm not negative about your idea about this, but, but I want you to know that, is that... About this, but, but, but I want you to know that, if that fifty million dollars will be available for these townships to have and build those end miles, if you could get those eight questions answered for us, that would help us a lot to really concentrate on the middle mile.
We have a, a, I guess, a Zoom, or a hand raised, the, who's the, whoever the person is, can you state your name, and they have five minutes to give a comment to make. I don't know who it is, so. What does it say?
Hi, Mark Rada, Jefferson, I live in Upper Deerfield Township. I'm actually on Northville Road, and I just wanted to make a comment about internet service. Believe it or not, as close as I get to the school, the township municipal building, all I have is Comcast, and my internet service is sketchy at that. So, you know, if there's any way that I can get another choice to, you know, use as my internet provider, I'm interested, as long as it's at a decent cost. Verizon did run their fiber optic line up this road, but they stopped the connection on either side of my property, and that's been about eleven years ago. So, Northville Road does not have wires. But pretty much everywhere else in the township does. So, you know, if somebody can give me another option with a good connection speed, a good price, and possibly improve the Wi-Fi connection that I have to use for my cell phone, because I don't have any cell phone reception here either for most of the day, that would be awesome. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that I would be on board with it, if it can actually improve everything as far as computer speeds, and cell phone Wi-Fi usage, and also, you know, help everybody out, they can, because I know there are places where there is no internet connection. So, but, I mean, you know, take your time with this decision, go fly.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for your comments.
For the record, she's part of the ninety-seven percent, so.
Upper Deerfield.
Yes. She can't get on, but she's
Uh, thank you. All right, let's, let's go from, can we close public comment for now?
No.
Sorry.
Oh, boy. Good evening. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Township. Jerry just said that he has somebody that wants to take over the middle mile, and they'll pay whatever the county's portion is, and they're going to maintain it. Ah, I'm a business board. I'm going to take over and maintain something. I'm locking it in for me. So, is this person going to be locking it in with them? Can you guarantee that? That doesn't make any sense. But I'm going to maintain the wires. I'm going to spend money, I'm going to give the county all the money that they need to make their portion of this bill. And I don't think it's enough money to do what you're talking about doing with all the changelovers that always comes first.
No, no, yes.
No, good chance.
No, seriously speaking, so
It doesn't make sense that somebody's
It does make sense, because there, there's a lot of money to be made here, and there are a lot of providers that can be part of this process. You have possibilities throughout the county for people that are uncertain.
You could invite, because people will probably try to listen, so.
We're afraid, we're afraid to succeed. So, we have a commitment from someone that says they're going to pay the bill, they're going to pay this, they're going to pay the service, and they're going to make the match. And so, that commitment comes from an entity that understands we have to have an open system. The system can't be closed by regulation, by B regulation, and by N T I A regulation. So, we can't have a system that isn't open to others. So, the answer to the question is, that's a commitment that we have to make in order to take the twenty-four million, and whatever portion of the fifty million, and the two-hundred-and-sixty million that comes in. So, it has to be an open system. The whole purpose of this, and Mr. Romero said it, and Mr. Capazola said it differently, but the same, at the end of the day, you have people that are served, the woman who was on the phone, who can't get access, you have people that have never been served, who, who have a cell phone that works sometimes. I was driving today between Salem and Cumberland, and I lost my service seventy-five percent of the time. And that happens to everyone. It happens in Violin. You run through Violin, you can't even get service in Violin, and he's violent. So, so all of these things meld together. It, it's not a nine-one-one.
How does this wire fixed phone service?
Fixed phone? Wireless? I was driving in my car, sir, I wasn't on a fixed phone.
No, no.
How is it fixed phone service?
Cellular, sir, it makes cellular service better, because you're going to have fiber to the towers that are providing the what, the servers. But they're not wired up.
You know, this is, this is, I'm telling you, I totally, I totally, totally get this confusion.
They're operating from a certain distance, it's, it's all a function of, it's all a function of connectivity.
If towers are wired up now, why is our wire going to make that company decide to put something on that power now?
The companies, the cell tower companies, cell phone companies do the same thing that the cable companies and Verizon do, and that is, they look at a return on investment. So, we actually did, as part of this initial project, what we did was, we looked at the service, and where the actual service in any halfway decent speeds, and it's basically in the cities, and in some cases, it's barely in the cities, because they have too much congestion, they need more sites. They need more sites, because each site has a finite amount of capacity. And then what happens is, when you start to get to the fringes, they just stop building in those areas. They stop building in those areas.
Our wire is going to make them change their mind and put an antenna there now, when there's already wires they can hook up to?
There's towers that they can hook up to at a low cost, there's fiber that they can hook up to at a low cost, significantly lower cost than what it would cost for them to build the tower themselves, build the fiber themselves, and provide service in those areas. So, yes, that's why they don't provide service in those areas today. Two years ago, I spoke to Verizon Wireless, on behalf of the county.
Towers are there, the wire is there, why does our wire make any difference, and all of a sudden
It's less expensive to get there, it shortens the distance. It's the same as the middle mile. The only reason an ISP's going to hook up to the middle mile is because it's going to cost less. The reason that Comcast doesn't go further is because it costs too much money. The reason Comcast asked Houghtwell and Maurice Nervous to pay the bill is because they couldn't, they didn't want to
They're carbon on service, Comcast
It's both. It's both. This is middle miles, dark fiber, we've got seventeen hundred strands. We've got the ability to connect cell towers, to connect fixed wireless for broadband service.
It's not going to make phone service any better in all probability because of
If you look at the, if you look at the study that Pew did, that's exactly what it says in the study, and that's what these open access middle mile networks did in other states. Because it opens it up, it shortens the distance, it, it lessens the capital and test, investment required for those companies to go to those areas.
How does it lessen the capital investment? If they can put, if they can put an antenna on a tower that's there with wires on it already, how does our wire lessen the capital investment?
There's a construction cost for the wire. So, the wires, there's fiber at some of these, Ms. Pecone said there is wires in some of these towers, but the capacity that's at these towers is not that great. Verizon, where they put it in, they just put in a few strands of what they needed to service the county or whatever's there. So, now, all of a sudden, if I have a wireless carrier that's there, I need more fiber coming in, I need more strands. So, it's got to be overbuilt. So, what they have to do is, they have to overbuild what's there today, so there's double the cost of what there would be there today. What this will do is, this will deliver it right to the towers, and what they do is, is they sign up to the service and sign up to the tower rent, and that's how they get on it. That's why they don't service it today, because the cost is too high.
Mr. Director.
Yes.
Mr. Director, I remember sitting on this floor twenty years ago, and it was the same issue, and didn't want to spend money to hook this county up. And I'm just very glad that we now have some resources that have come into this county. I'm sick and tired of being on a meeting, and I lose the call when I pass the post office. I'm tired of the students, my students, having to use their cell phone because they can't get internet access. I just, we have a possible solution to this, and I hope we can follow it, so we can get this county worked up. This makes no sense, that in twenty-twenty-three
Agreed.
Cumberland County does not have, it just doesn't make sense. So, whatever we can do to do it, it's complicated. Every question, I'm confused even more. So, hopefully, all this will be answered at the fifteenth meeting, and subsequently, we'll, and before that, we get the information that we can look at and process, so we'll have the questions that we need to ask too. But I'm just glad that this process has got to this point. It's been long enough.
All right, let's wrap it up. I appreciate, thank you, thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. We're going to move on to, so I, take, let's close, can I have a motion to close the poll? All in favor?
All right.
All right, so let's move on to the consent agenda.
Public comment reserved.
Public comment. All right. Second. All right, all in favor? We closed the discussion about with the presentation, now we're opening to the resolutions that are on our agenda, and thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. So, does anyone have any comments about the resolutions that are going to be presented?
Yes, can we speak consent directly?
Don't be pushy there. It can be correct, yes. Miss Acevito, you want to
Sandy Acevito, Upper Deerfield Township, Resolution two zero two three four seven six, for the MAPS of some kind. Why, why didn't that go out to bid?
Well, what they, I'll, I'll leave, is anyone here from the, here from the mosquito commissioner, or that, can you answer this, because I want to Neil, Mr. Riley, could you make a comment of why, because I, I would have said that they were specially built, but you could, if you're on there, if you could make a comment about that, why?
Doug, I'm here, Doug.
Okay.
I followed, I just think one question.
Miss Acevito, you want to ask the question again, why did it go to bid?
Why, yeah, why didn't, didn't it go through the normal bidding process, instead of a non-fair and open?
Go ahead.
Matt, is that what we're coming out?
Yeah, hold on one second, Mr. Riley, Mr. Ridgeway's going to try to answer that.
So, between, so the bid threshold's forty-four thousand, I'm sorry, yeah, forty-four thousand, pay-to-play's seventeen thousand five hundred, two different aggregation thresholds, I think, like that. So, if it's between the value of the seventeen-five and forty-four, we can just get three quotes, and then whichever one price factor you're looking at, that we can do a non-fair and open award. The reason we sometimes do that is, it takes a lot of time to put together specifications, so it's my staff time, it's like Neil's staff time to try and write up something that they're trying to get. Sometimes it's, it's tough calls to be able to just reach out to a company and get a quote for it. I didn't directly handle it, but Neil, I don't know whether the companies got quotes from, or if this, if that really speaks to the situation, so.
But that's the process?
Yeah, but traditionally, it's not
He didn't answer the question, but these MAPS are, there's only two companies in the entire country that make these MAPS. So, it's, it's kind of hard to get multiple bids on it. So, we, we, once we, we bought these MAPS two years ago, and we're trying to deal with the same company, because, like I said, there's only two companies in the country that build them, and we like the ones that this company builds. So, we're trying to keep everything safe.
To answer your questions.
Yeah. Twenty-twenty-three four eighty-five, for the additional money for the Road Development Corporation. Is this coming out of the A R P funds?
Melissa in the house has the social services for the homeless, and I'm the So, I think when we issued the RFP, stated what the amount available was for the grant, and ended up being a hundred thousand dollar tie, that the people who were available upon the activities, but this is right next to you, I can speak.
So, so when the, so when the planning to bid, you know, the RFP for the services, a hundred thousand dollars was held back as unallocated, trying to think ahead of the, you know, the year ahead, where we might be able to add money to different contracts, you know, who spend it before their, their term is up. So, that's, it's not additional funds, it's just unallocated, and then it became allocated. So, and it's the shelter that needs it, because the shelter has been operating at full capacity for a very long time. Okay?
I was just wondering why, why none of the A R P funds were being used, but this is a grant, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Twenty-twenty-three four ninety-four. What, what process is used to determine what area of county roads get repaired and, and when?
Mr. Riley, you, can you answer that? It's four ninety-four, and it's, just asking how the, what roads are, how they determine what roads to do.
So, we keep a running tally of the roads that we would like to do, and then we reevaluate throughout the year, depending on if we had a bad winter, which, you know, one road top feet off a little bit more than the other. So, it's just, that's a, that's a constantly changing list of roads that we do.
What particular road is this in, or what roads was this in the City of Violin, this four ninety-four? Was this Lincoln Avenue, was this?
Doug, are you on, do you know what that one is?
Yes, that is the project that handles the part of Sherman Avenue directly in front of the hospital, and also create the new driveway into the arc facility and the violent public work area.
Okay, that, that project is back, so that's, that was a while ago, we proved that, so.
Yeah, this is a final change order to allow us to close out the contract.
Yes, and very, yeah, safer, definitely safer.
That's a good ask.
Okay, Miss Acevito, you got
That, the, the list of the railways that need to be done, I guess I could oversum that, I really get it.
It's a runny, yes, it's a runny thing, and it's actually, actually, every municipality and county, state, they all have a runny list of, of how they evaluate. So, we, of course, the county has one also.
It's a public record.
Yes.
Okay, the next one, twenty-twenty-three five thirty-one, on the digital trunk radio system. Can somebody explain the unforeseen sighting and construction issues that come up to increases by a hundred and sixteen thousand?
Gabe, do you have any? This is five thirty.
Good evening, Gabe Scarpah, County O E M. The change order, the needs for change orders are due to changes in scope through Motorola, changes in venues, plans, whether it be the City of Violin site that we're doing, an alternate site at J C Plaza, where we had to move from the Millville City Hall over to J C Plaza. Still work to be done in the planning and processing at Greenwich, where we have the tower site getting built. And there's also more engineering oversight, site walkthrough, or, or drive around to make sure in the end that the entire site is up to the satisfaction of what we need. There is a whole list of things, I don't have it in front of me.
And this is for the nine-one-one, is this for the nine-one-one?
It's for the communication project for the county, yes, the interoperability project.
It, it's not nine-one-one, it's a seven-hundred system.
It's a seven-hundred communication project.
Seven-hundred millimeter radio system. So, this was instituted at the state level, and we're trying to
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Twenty-twenty-three five thirty-two. This is a renewable energy consultant services. Why did you choose competitive contracting and not go out on the regular bid process?
Well, I don't know how to, we are going, as far as I know, we're, we're looking for Well, I don't know how to, we are going, as far as I know, we're, we're looking for a company to look into doing a solar, so, I hope I say this right. Solar fields in the county that pay for our electric, I was told this is, all right. So we were told that this is the, I was told this is the way it should be done. Companies will come in and actually they will do it at their cost. They will, they'll trade off, they, whatever they get, the recs or whatever. And the, and the benefit is that this county will receive our electric, pay for all buildings, the time we want to do for over a year.
So it's for electric?
Over, over a year, probably more than that, so. It was done in the city of Ireland, and, and thirty percent of that was under contract, and the city of Ireland benefited from that electric utility. So I thought the county could do the same thing.
So the first step in that is, I consult through this process to then assess all the county and buildings and land that we have on, see what is possible, if anything, for us to venture from it. This is the first jumping point to see.
We gotta start somewhere at the beginning, so.
Why would, why would they use competitive contracting instead of public bidding? How do you do that?
Uh, there's certain things that you can use competitive contracting for. The big difference between a bid, you accept the lowest responsible response of their RFP process, there's an evaluation criteria where cost is considered, but then other factors like the level of experience a firm might have, how well they respond to, what they think that our needs are.
So it's the same thing as a mass, then?
Yeah, so it's a grading criteria versus whoever's love us, and.
Okay, so same as a mass.
Did that answer your questions, Ms. Sessiato?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, before we close, it's Ridgeway? All right, I'm sorry.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Township. On resolution twenty twenty-three four eighty-eight, it's a resolu, it's a resolution authorizing the County Agriculture Development Board to review, manage, approve, and/or deny applications regarding special occasion events on preserved farms in accordance with P L twenty twenty-three comma C dot nine, C dot nine. I read this resolution, and the only thing I didn't see in the resolution, that there will be an application fee. Our employees will be going over the applications, and I believe that we should have a fee. Their, their farms, farmers are gonna make money off of it. The taxpayers paid to preserve the farms. They're gonna come to the Ag Board and ask for permission to use the farms for their benefit. And there should be an application fee involved. That's my opinion. I know Matt has his, and that's fine with me, but that's my opinion, and you all should look into it. I mean, we used to open up the roads for the farmers and close them for them to put their irrigation across the road, and we never charged them. And we got a road opening permit fee now. So the farmers, they have their benefits, and they charge enough for their produce. On resolution twenty twenty-three five forty-five, it's a resolution authorizing First Amendment to lease agreement between the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Historical Society. I did not see an amount in this resolution. Is there an amount for the lease?
Mr. Ridgeway, what number was that again?
Five four five. Cumberland County Historical Society, a lease agreement. I didn't see an amount, so I was just curious.
Last question or any questions? Do you have any to, sure, both, I think.
Well, I don't.
So the first question is, it's statutory, right? On the review of the applications, that's a statutory directive that we're responding to. I think that's what Mr. Vazarski was about to offer to you.
But if I come to you and ask for a copy.
It's called an unfounded mandate.
If I come and ask for a copy, I have to pay for it. If I ask for Oprah, I have to pay for it.
But the state gives us jobs to do and sometimes doesn't let us collect. You know exactly that.
Okay. We gotta get new people in the state. How about that? How about the lease agreement?
I'm looking up the lease agreement. Dollar, yeah, I think it was a dollar, and it's a, they were holder of tenants, and they're trying to build their own building, and we're trying to carry them through for the next, I think, three years until they can get their building.
Thank you.
You did.
Eddie, what else? See, no one, can I have a motion to close the public portion of the? All in favor?
Aye.
So let's move on to the consent agenda, the spelled consent agenda resolution. I'm over here now. Put that hat on. Just, just a reminder, the consent agenda is either a no, a yea, or nay vote. It's not, there's no abstentions, or you can abstain for all of them. It's all one, all or nothing, it's, there's no exceptions to the rule in the consent agenda.
Unless there's a conflict.
This is a conflict?
But that would be a more exceptional thing.
Okay, is it, did we have enough time to, sure, but isn't there enough time to pull that off the consent agenda if they're gonna have a, a conflict?
I think by pattern and practice, you've established a system where they can, so you gotta give them a report, that's all.
All right, and I'll say, I've allowed it, but our system is different than it was six months ago. The idea is a yea or nay vote, so we can speed this up. And if they make exceptions to that, was, I told them, we have a week to do, and if it's after that week, then you can afford me, and I'll pull it off then.
So there's, you say, you have an extension.
Yeah, well. You can stay, but you've stayed from all, so it's either, it's all.
You have an extension on one, why would you abstain from all?
Cuz it's a consent agenda, it's either yes, a yea, or nay vote on it. It's not, actually, it's an abstention, you wanna abstain, abstain, it's a nay or a yea, it's not like it used to be, and I've been very lenient with it. You either pull it off during the two-week period of time, or don't. It's, you have, if you have a conflict, then pull it off, it's easy to do, so it's.
But now.
But what?
I'm just gonna say, cuz there is one that I have a conflict, but I wanna vote no on it, I just because it's conflict. And I, Mr. Silo has had because of work relationships before, so.
And here's the point, here's the point. And now we'll let it, we'll do it one more time. The consent agenda is either a yea or nay, pull it off, you have two weeks between meetings to pull it off the agenda if, if you have a conflict, two weeks. Just, you can pull it off yourself by informing the administration, or, and inform me a week, within a week. So you have a week and a week after that to let me know if you have a conflict, to pull it off.
If I may, so I, so I think what we're trying to get at is, so anything under the consent agenda is assumed to be likely a yes vote.
A yes vote.
And then anything else that you may have a different opinion on, a modus operandi, just pull it off and then vote on it individually, is that?
Individually, correct. And I've stayed from it if you have to, or you have a conflict.
Okay.
So going further, but I, there is one particular thing I have a conflict because, not that I'm against it, I just have a conflict with it.
All right, all right, so let's, let's finish.
Like, I, you know, I haven't helped on my board, so.
All right, let's.
Count up this, you go, well, you can sit down, we can sit down on the closed session, uh, work session, and you could fully explain.
Well, I, I have.
You may have.
I have explained it over the last seven months, so I, let's say this, we'll finish up this month, and then after that, please pull it off. I have no problem, pull it off. And I've given courtesy for over seven months to understand how we're doing it, to speed it up. I mean, this wasted more time on a consent agenda that that should be a yes, or a yea, or nay vote. Hopefully, since there is no conflicts, and that's why, why we put it on here.
So, you know, though of this for many years, my understanding is, you know, you, you're right, it's a yes or no. Or you can abstain because of a conflict, then my.
Ms. Russo, we changed the, how the consent, we used to do it haphazardly. We gotta go back and forth, and each of us, this is to pull it out and make it very simple, that here's a consent agenda, we all agree this is a good thing, let's vote on it, it's a yea, or, or we can vote no. But that's why we're doing this, it is different, it was different, January we started, it was different. So now I'm saying that it's different cuz we used to go back and forth. How many times I had to go back and forth flipping to find which ones that I, that, that you guys broadly put consent agenda on it out of the blue, read by our business administrator, and then we had to keep going back and forth, which one? This is very clear upfront, and these are things we agree from, agreed to. And now, and but every, every meeting, there's always, I wanna pull this off. No, that's not what it intended. If you wanna pull it off, you have two weeks, two weeks to say, I, I have a conflict, I don't agree with that. But I, but you have a week yourself, and a week with the chair to say, that's good, let's pull it off. That's what I want to do going forward. So if we, I don't mind, let's finish July, but in August it starts, and we've had eight months to figure out that we're doing it differently than we did for twenty-five or thirty years because it was very haphazard and very.
We got it.
Got it, okay?
But let me, I got another question then, because let's say in that two weeks, something happens, and you have a conflict, and that's happened with me.
And, and even at the last minute, you pick up the phone and say, hey Doug, I got a conflict, then we can pull it off. If not, then you have to abstain, or you have, not abstain, you have to say no, you have to say.
And that's what I have done in the past. But, and then we make our rules.
Yeah, we made our rules in January, and then we've been very lenient.
I'm just saying, I've always voted yes, no, or abstain.
But it's, it's changed, and January changed, and we changed it because it was very haphazard. Every time we came here, we voted on, lumping everything together, and, and the vote was taken. And every time I, I, for four, three years, I objected to that because it was very, I don't know, here we are, going back and forth flipping. This is meant to be very straightforward, here's what we're doing, and everything else, we'll discuss, we'll debate, we'll vote on it cuz that's the way, cuz we have some concerns with it, and we can voice that, we can spend more time on those issues than this stuff that's very straightforward. So I don't, I don't know, it's not rocket science, it's very straightforward and easy to understand that these are things you guys have, we all have no issue with, and we're gonna vote for it. And if not, it's being removed, and it can be put on, and we can discuss it, so.
This, this is the way it's done in other places. We have to accept changes sometime. New administration bring new ideas. I know you, you might have an issue with it, but this is what.
But it's not an issue.
It's not an issue.
It's an issue.
It is an issue, which is less than minutes.
Is abstaining, why can't you just?
Because it's a consent agenda, we agree.
Yes.
We agree, okay? Okay? So now, and I'll say this, Ms. Russo, you have a conflict, fine, I'll do it. And then remember, next month, you have a conflict, a week, two weeks, and say.
Pull it.
Just pull it, say, hey, pull it, and no one's ever giving you an argument about pulling something.
Yeah, mine's had, and, and like I said, I've always voted yes, no, or abstain, and the reason that I'm, you know, I abstain is because if I wasn't there, I didn't understand it, or within the two-week period, due to work or whatever, I just wanna make sure I'm not voting to hurt the business to come back and say that I voted on it, and I shouldn't have, so that's why. So you abstain. And I went to the lawyer, and I asked the lawyer.
Well, I'll say, I gave you advice.
He gave me advice to do that, so, thank you.
Well.
And that's what we're supposed to do, that's what was supposed to.
Well, actually, it's supposed to be very cut and dry for our staff to develop a consent agenda, and they know that's, that's it, and it's all set. We don't have to change things or rewrite it or whatever, and it's very clear, or add it to, we get added to, we had to, but it just.
Work session.
On the consent agenda, we have resolutions two thousand twenty-three to four seventy-five through five eighteen. With motion, a second, you can vote by consent agenda on those resolutions. This is just a vote.
For, say. As the advice would be eternal, I have. Okay, you need a motion?
Yes.
Do you mention much on yours?
So yes, and they do a great job of it, cuz I have a conflict.
This isn't voting on it, it's just a, essentially.
Open to discussion.
You guys are occurring to the process to vote by consent agenda on this.
All right, so we.
Okay, so we got a motion, we got a second roll call. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Saleh. Commissioner, Deputy Director Romero.
The last time, yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Okay, now, with motion, a second, to adopt by consent agenda resolutions two thousand twenty-three dash four seventy-five through five eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes, but I have to abstain from resolution four eighty-five for a conflict. I agree with the whole grant, but I have a conflict.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Okay, now for regular resolutions.
Would you can stay?
Number one, resolution two thousand twenty dash five nineteen. Resolution rejecting all bids for providing preventive maintenance and repair services for emergency generators at various Cumberland County locations, bid number twenty-three dash zero three, resubmission number three. Need a motion, a second, to.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Fisher Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash five twenty. Resolution improving budget amendment for W I O A data reporting and analysis in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars. Motion, a second.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash five two one. Resolution improving budget amendment for Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act in the amount of five million three hundred seventy-six thousand and sixteen dollars. Motion, a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash five twenty-two. Resolution improving budget amendment for Workforce New Jersey Grant in the amount of two million five hundred seventy thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. Need a motion, a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash five two three. Is resolution improving budget amendment for workforce learning link in the amount of a hundred thirty thousand dollars. Motion, a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash five two four. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contracts for providing legal services for criminal defense for the County of Cumberland, RFP number twenty-two dash seventy-one resubmission. Motion, a second.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash five two five. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contracts for providing labor council and labor-related services for the County of Cumberland, RFP twenty-two dash seventy-two resubmission, and authorizing the re-advertising for additional proposals. Need a motion, a second.
So moved. I'll second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash five two six. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing litigation service council for the County of Cumberland, RFP twenty-two dash seventy-three resubmission, and authorizing re-advertising for additional proposals. Motion, a second.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash five two seven. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing legal services as defense counsel for the Cumberland County Workers Compensation Program, RFP twenty-two dash seventy-five resubmission. Need a motion, a second.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-528. Is a resolution authorizing re-advertising for an acceptance of competitive contracting proposals for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused occupational training and internship program services for Salem County. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-529. Resolution awarding a contract for providing tree trimming and removal services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier 181-CC CCPS. Bid number 23-19. Motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-530. Resolution awarding contract for specifications for 2023 road program, County Route 621, 634, and 673, in the cities of Bridgeton and Vineland, and the township of Deerfield, Cumberland County, New Jersey. Bid number 23-23. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-531. Resolution approving change order number three to contract for engineering service support for the P-25 700 megahertz digital trunk radio system, pre-qualified per RFQ number 19-50, as needed, general architect and engineering services. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-532. Resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting for providing renewable energy consulting services. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-533. Resolution exercising first option to renew contract for furnishing and delivering bottled spring water service for the County of Cumberland. RFD number 22-35. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-534. Resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing various medical services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. RFP number 22-28. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-535. Is a resolution amending resolution 2020-215, and authorizing an addendum to the lease agreement between the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Board of Vocational Education for property located at 2745 South Delsey Drive, Vineland, New Jersey. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2023-536. Is a resolution authorizing improving settlement in the litigation matter of Nicole Bundy versus Cumberland County, Edel Superior Court of New Jersey Law Division, Cumberland County, docket number CUML 61122. Motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2023-537. Resolution authorizing improving settlement in the litigation matter of Katonia Patterson versus Cumberland County, Edel Superior Court of New Jersey Law Division, Cumberland County, docket number CUML 60922. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2023-538. Is a resolution authorizing assignment in the matter of United States versus Cumberland County and Cumberland County Department of Corrections, U.S. District Court for the District of New Jersey, docket number 1:23-CV-02655. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-539. Resolution amending resolution 2018-410, and authorizing the extension of the lease agreement with the Cumberland County Drug Treatment Center, a nonprofit corporation. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2023-540. Resolution amending resolution 2020-424, authorizing application for renewal of the County Human Services Advisory Council Grant Program Contract Number S00042. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2023-541. Is a resolution authorizing a second amendment to the lease between the County of Cumberland and the Bridge of Hope Incorporated to extend the lease term. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-542. Resolution approving budget amendment for Human Services Advisory Council Grant Program for $4,403 additional funds. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-543. Is a resolution approving budget amendment for fiscal year 2024 Child Protection and Permanency Grant Program for 21,000 additional funds. Motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-544. Is a resolution amending resolution 2020-425, authorizing application for renewal of the Child Protection and Permanency Grant Program Contract Number SF0170. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-545. Is a resolution authorizing first amendment to lease agreement between the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Historical Society. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-546. Is a resolution memorializing and ratifying acceptance and execution of a grant agreement amendment for the Small Cities CDVG-CV1 Grant Program for the County of Cumberland. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-547. Is a resolution approving change order number one to contract for supplying and delivering office furniture and electronics equipment for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier 181-CC CCPS. Bid number 21-55. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-548. Resolution approving budget amendment for the Workforce Investment Opportunity Act Smart Steps Program in the amount of $1,605, which covers the period of July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. Motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-549. Is a resolution authorizing grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for a local efficiency achievement program fellowship grant. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2020-550. Resolution authorizing grant application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the Local Efficiency Achievement Program Fellowship Grant. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht. Resolution 2023-551. Is a resolution approving budget amendment for a Small Cities CDVG-CV1 Grant in the additional amount of $1,845,479. Need a motion of second. Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa. Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selaya. Deputy Director Romero. Director Albrecht.
Can I do this? Can I have a motion? Can we have a...
Yeah. We are back. So, we began the month of June with a cash balance of $43,911,195.77. Cash receipts of $9,666,324.30. And dispersments of $19,928,148.86 for an ending balance of $33,649,371.44. Attached is an itemized list of investments that total $58,957,394.31. And then there are two CDs held by the clerk's office for $200,000. Attached to the budget report, breaking out everything as of June 30. No real concerns of just noticing some revenues are coming in a little bit lower than expected. Granted, we're only six months into the year, so it could turn around. Interest is doing really well, so I'm not too worried. Spending is about what you would expect for this time of year.
So, nothing jumps out at you that you see us making it to the end of the year without...
Yeah, we won't go bankrupt this year. County clerk's office fees and sheriff's fees, so it's truly dictated by what's going on in the market. It's not off tremendously, but it's just coming in a little bit lower than we had budgeted anticipated. But, nothing to worry about just yet, but as we get farther down in the end of the year, then transfers start in November. So, if we, if we have anything that we can look at, then we'll have a better idea for where our revenues will come in towards the end of the year at that point, too.
And we'd like to compliment the treasurer for making that application that resulted in resolution 223-551, $1.28 million to the county. Good job, Jess.
Although, I just took a get... You signed the agreement, we just had to get the money from you.
Can I have a motion to accept the treasurer's support? Second. All in favor? All right, can I have an authorization to pay these salaries and wages? Second. All in favor? Now, we come to a public comment period. Any new businesses or any ideas people want to throw out? Can I have a motion to move into public comment? All right, all in favor? Anybody would like to step to the mic and have comments, have ideas? We do have several meetings coming up. As you see, the broadband got a little... Hopefully, we're going to have a good discussion. We put five hours aside to have a discussion coming up. We're looking forward to meeting where our counterparts are sailed to talk. So, if you want to save it for then, that's great. Anyone? State your name, and you have five minutes, and then where are you from?
I almost left. This is the first time I've been to a commissioning meeting. My name is Cynthia Dozier, I'm from Bridgeton, Cumberland Avenue in Bridgeton, New Jersey. You can hear me? I'm from Bridgeton, Cumberland Avenue in Bridgeton. And my issue is that I used to get the newspaper, South Jersey Times. It stopped coming to my house. Now, maybe I'm still in the 20th century, but... So, I couldn't get it on my phone, I had some issues with my phone. They said they could give it on my phone. I couldn't get it on my phone. But even when I was getting the South Jersey Times, I'm going back to the Bridgeton Evening News when we used to have reports of the commissioner meetings, reports of Bridgeton City Council meetings, Fairfield, all these townships. We used to have reports of what went on in the meetings, and I would read about it. Now, I don't know what's going on in my own county as far as the officials. So, then when it comes time to vote, I don't know who's done what. You know? And I got the ballot for the primary in June, I hardly knew who any of the people were. Because we don't... The South Jersey Times gives news about maybe Gloucester County or whatever, but it doesn't give that much news. It doesn't give any news about Cumberland County as far as the meetings. They don't have any report on the meetings anymore. So, I'm wondering, maybe there could be a... And I see the young man there has the camera, but I don't like, I don't know whether I could get it on my TV. I'm not that... I'm not into that technology that much. I mean, I have a smartphone, but I don't know how to use it like the young people do. You know? So, I'm still, like I said, I'm still, maybe I'm still in 20th century. I like to have something in my hand where I can read. So, I'm thinking, maybe you could have some kind of newsletter, county newsletter, once a month, that could give reports of what's going on as far as the meetings, the commissioner meetings, the city council meetings, the township meetings, to know what's going on, what kind of decisions your officials are making, you know? And then I could know, well, do I want to vote this one? Do I want to vote for this one? You know, that type of thing. So, that's my issue. I like to know what's going on, and I'm not that good with getting on the internet to know what's going on. And the young man that has the camera, well, you know, if I had, if I could get it on my phone, I don't want to just sit and hold my phone that long. Like, I'm 68 years old, I'm not, I'm just looking at TV, but I don't want to hold a phone that long to look at... Beg your pardon?
Do you get YouTube TV?
Uh, my husband get... Yeah, we can get it. My husband looks at YouTube all the time, but, like I said, I'm not that technology savvy.
You can get that easily with looking up Quinn Broadcastler? Each one of these meetings will be available right on YouTube. It's very easy to get. And again, I'm 64 years old, it took me so long to figure things out, too. I have to go to my daughter to figure things out as well, so I understand your dilemma. Unfortunately, today's newspapers are not what they used to be.
I know.
We're losing writers, we're losing reporters in the area.
I met you at the church that evening, we talked about this. They don't have, we don't even have any local reporters in this school, you brought up to me. It's a problem.
It's a universal...
It is, and I said this before, you know, not just here, but look what all our youth is doing out there. Years ago, you know, if you would pick up the paper and see how all the youth is doing in sports and all that, you don't even know that. Because, you know, it's a shame they can't pick up the paper 10 years from now and say, look, I need the paper, because there is no local paper.
We're all worried about TikTok.
It seems as though there's a blackout, you know? The news blackout, and hopefully, I don't know, is there some way to remedy that? I feel you completely. I mean, even now, our papers aren't delivered anymore, they're mailed. And if you don't go to beat that person at 7-Eleven and get the two papers you need to get, you don't get a paper that way.
I know our Office of Agents sends out a newsletter quarterly, Barbara, is it quarterly that we do? And gives us information about what's happening in that department. Maybe we can do...
Maybe we can do something, Stan?
Stan, you want to...
My department's gonna kill me. But I'll give you my number, call me, if you can get on the internet, I'll show you how to get to YouTube, I'll, I'll walk you through it, all right?
Okay.
Come back and sit down, I'll give you my number.
Okay, okay. We, we understand, we understand, Stan, we understand there's a problem, that's why we brought the, the crew in to take, to fill these, to, or live stream it, so we had the ability to see what's going on, because there was a lack of information. We've also created our website, so we also broadcast that, and it's on our local, uh, quick broadcasting.
Twenty-two or twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
Well, depends on city and...
But like she's saying, you know, a lot of all times, you know, they do, she's not, and then, you know, as I said, Office of Agent, it's nice, because a lot of our centers do not have access, you know, computers, they can't get on their phone, so at least she sends out a newsletter to let them know what's going on, which is good.
Don't have broadband all throughout counties.
Right.
Thank you. All right, I, it's a prob, it's a prob, uh, come on up, come on up, come on up.
So it is an issue, we, we kind of tried to remedy it best we can, because it is changing, so, so, go ahead, Stadesco.
And the minutes, there's minutes after the meetings that she could pick up a hard copy.
Uh, this.
If she wants to read.
Stan?
Yes.
Tell her that you could pick up minutes from the meeting if she, uh, we could always get, that's a hard copy, so, okay.
She should send it out more.
All right, well, we've come a long way already, so a lot of people, we see these meetings, so...
Mr. Stadesco?
Uh, Tom Tadesco, Hope Bowl Township. I'm actually here on behalf of the Hope Bowl Township Committee. Uh, I wanted to, um, a lot of times you, you guys get a lot of, uh, hard questions and whatnot, but tonight I wanna come here with some good news, I wanna thank the county of Cumberland, uh, and I did not know that your OEM director was gonna be here, so it's, I feel, I feel a little awkward, but, uh, real quick, uh, we lost our generator, uh, at our sewer pump station back in May, and our, our sewer pump station on Rhodes Town Road is our main pump station, which, which feeds Bridston, so it's the most important pump station in Hope Bowl Township. If we were gonna have a power outage, you know, we run the risk of, of, uh, having a, an environmental nightmare, to be, to be quite fr- frank. So we had to, uh, rent a generator for the, for the interim, and of course, that, that was hurting our budget, uh, we were having trouble paying for our fully funded broadband system, that, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I couldn't resist, okay? Okay. I'm sorry. So, so we were, so we were looking at up to a year for generator with, with all the, uh, uh, lead times for, for those types of equipment, we're getting, uh, numbers back of a year while, while we're paying three, four thousand dollars a month. So I was introduced to your OEM director, Gabe Scarpa, uh, back in the middle of May. Gabe went on a couple, three-week, uh, search, uh, throughout the state to find a generator that would be acceptable, it took us a little bit of back and forth, uh, he finally found one up in Hamilton, we didn't wanna drive up to Hamilton, he found one up in Deerfield that we could look at, and once we discovered that that generator was, was, was going to work for Hope Bowl Township, he put a request into the state OEM, and literally, this is, this is no exaggeration, the next day, it was delivered in Hope Bowl Township. So, so Gabe, on behalf of Hope Bowl Township, thank you very much, and if I could, just real quick, I, I, I heard that early discussion with the broadband, and, um, as a private resident now, I'm, I'm just gonna get on my soapbox here, I, I hope we look at the unserved, that, to me, the, is the most important, uh, aspect of, of, of the broadband project, that's what Hope I wanted to do, and I think Deputy Director, without putting any words in his mouth, that's what he was trying to, um, portray, it's not to try to cut your bill from four hundred to three fifty, or why you're losing your, why I don't have the cell service when I go through Ferton, so just keep in mind the unserved. Hope Bowl Township had about a hundred and sixty unserved, well, I'm getting all choked up, but we had a hundred and sixty unserved people in Hope Bowl Township that we're now gonna serve, and I'd love to see that throughout the rest of Cumberland County. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Deputy Director?
Just very briefly, I wanted to, uh, just notify the...
State your name.
Oh, sorry, Charles Albino, the, uh, Director for Department of Corrections. I just wanted to advise the, the board, um, and the county administration that we, uh, yesterday completed, I, you know, we're doing that renovation project in the annex, and we completed one of, one of the units, um, so that puts us halfway through our project, I wanted to let you know, and also, even though it's under really short notice, if anyone wants to, uh, come and take a tour of that unit, um, early tomorrow morning, because I have inmates waiting to move in, so, uh, I wanted, I'll get, take some photographs in case you're not able to make it, but I wanted to thank again the county administration for the funding. I think when you see, uh, photos from before and after of what it looked like, I think you'll, you'll see that it's money well spent, so I wanted to thank you again.
(applause) We're continuing to try, we have a, a plan, and we're continuing to implement, this commission is, uh, is trying to piece things together, and we're, and cleaning up our annex and our new part of, new jail, part of the jail, has been our goal to increase the, uh, the inmates we can house there, it's a slow process, but we're doing it step by step, and, and you see time has come by, and the improvements are being made, and I, I wanna thank the director for making that happen, uh, cause I think it, uh, it's well overdue, and I thank this commission for standing up for the jail to make it happen, so, um, thank you. All right, Eddie, Eddie, what else? Uh, the administration, too, for making that happen, cause they worked their butt off to get it there, so, uh, all right, well, um, do we have, uh...
We have to close.
We have a closed session, tell you, we, oh, I know, do we have a closed session?
Yes, I promise to be brief, so...
Any action out of that, no?
I do not anticipate any action.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to close the public comment period?
So moved. So moved.
All, all favor?
Right.
All right, uh, I just have it, and, uh, so, I guess we can exit, uh, can we make a motion, because we have to go into closed session.
Doing commissioners' reports, or...
Yeah, well, it's the, at the bottom, does anyone have, uh...
I have just something to say, if there is a national hire a veteran instead, so if you, um, are out there and you're looking at a vet, and, uh, you seem to be an possible candidate, consider them, please.
So silly, do you have some? Cause we'll take them.
Actually, we might.
Is that true, Commissioner Romero, you'd take them at our feet? All right, does, no, no...
No, please don't, cause I'm still reading.
Okay. All right.
I just, something that's, we've lost four teenagers in the past, uh, month or thirty days, whatever it was, uh, to violence in our county, it's something we need to address. I know, I would love to get some different things out there for kids, some kind of community center, we really need to work towards things like that. We're looking to put all this different, all these different funds in the different projects and things like that, but it really starts with the children, just like we were talking about earlier, um, we have a lot of underserved kids in our community, and, uh, it, it's scary, I, cause I personally know one of the peoples, uh, I played football growing up, with Shelley Townsend, his son was murdered, fourteen-year-old boy, so, we, we need to do something.
His vigil's...
I know.
Well, I'll just say, follow up, the prosecutors' office, we've been talking, because you talk about community center, that doesn't matter where you put it, it's always in the wrong place, because you have, uh, it'll serve one community not another, but we do have schools, and we do have schools that could be, but actually, I'll say once, the Center City School in Violet, it was designed to be a community school, it's closed, so they don't open it up, so they're a kind of school that, they're already designed that do, and are close to the neighborhood, that are, and the prosecutors are very open to, uh, and I'll say this commission, we'll pay for security, we'll pay for the, the, the people to be there, and now we can open, uh, we can have community centers all over this county in different areas that would meet their needs. So if, I'll say that, Mr. Capizola, if you wanna kind of head the, the, to kind of move that forward, is Eddie...
I'm much more...
So we, we will look at the, identify schools in the areas and tell, and ask them, what do you want us to do to meet their needs at night where it's supposed to be, so...
It does, I mean, being a teacher does create security risks, I know that that's a big thing, but the principal's, well, we, we gotta, we gotta work that out.
We'll work it out, we'll figure it out, so...
Open gyms in some of these schools.
That was a big discussion of few years here, Bridston using local schools as community centers, because they're just sitting there in all the neighborhood, that's, that's the mind.
But the one in Violet, like, exactly, they have that pool in there, we're not using it, I don't, I don't know what's going on with that. The high school, I mean, we have these huge buildings, we need to use it.
Well, the Board of Education in Violet is actually, you know, hard paying for, uh, security companies at this point, to impose the role of security, because, you know, they see the need, and that may be something else we may be able to do for, you know, gyms and so...
You can shop, the bathroom playing basketball, yeah, it's, it was a lot of change that needs to happen, so...
Commissioner Pearson has definitely said, it's cheaper to buy security than build a building in the wrong pla- I say wrong place, because whoever you build, it's wrong, what population does it get served, so if we have schools, let's see what we, what they need, and it's, let's approach them, and, and then go back and say, uh, here's what we need, and we'll, we'll find it, so, all right.
Mr. Romero, you have something?
Yeah, uh, just to remind people that right now, we're going through our Puerto Rican course here, week, and we have events going on on the violent, violent persons, and we appreciate that you cooperate, come in, come out, learn about our culture, Spanish culture, Cuban, but we're not, we're not too, we're not too foreign to Puerto Ricans and Cubans, uh, and we appreciate if you come out and spend some time with us, and, um, you know, welcome you. And, uh, also, uh, violent, after three, four years in the center city, finally, we got a swimming pool open in Ford and Plum, uh, we are seeking a lifeguard, okay? If you know any kids, uh, any young men out there, young lady, the one that has a life, uh, uh, lifeguard license, please.
Eighteen.
Uh, yes, uh, please, uh, you know, let us know, because, uh, it, it took a lot of years to get that pool open, and, uh, and it's, it's hot out there, my kids need to be out swimming, and if you know anybody, please, let us know.
Uh, everybody, you know what, I just wanna mention the library.
I looked over. I'm just, I, I just attended last week, um, Triad, uh, the sheriff's department had their, um, Triad, um, and they do that with the Office of Agent, so it's nice to see, uh, a lot of our seniors come out and see what services that's provided. The sheriff officers all cook the meal, um, to, and they serve the meal to everyone that attends, so, the next one will be in October, um, and we're talking about children, um, next Tuesday, which is August first, it's our national night out throughout the county, we have several local, um, police departments that have national night out, I know violent's involved, and I know, I think it's commercial township, or Morris River Township also does, so make sure that, you know, you get out, make sure the kids get out, they do a lot of stuff for the children, it's all free, um, sheriff's department, and, um, they do the hot dogs and hamburgers for, and we have a lot of local vendors that do games, but everything has to be about the youth and their families, so make sure you get, you know, try to get out, but that's what's important, we're just talking about the youth, you know, get them out, get them involved.
It's a, it's a good time, so...
Yeah, great time, as long as the weather, it's, they're all very crowded, and it's nice to see everybody having a great time, fun.
Okay, I have two things. Can you finish, Commissioner? I have two things. Um, over the past weekend, um, Sunday, there was a world soccer match, uh, between, I believe Jamaica and France, and I found out that one of the players on the Jamaican team, her grandmother there from Bridston, um, she did Wilkshtier, Tierney Wilkshtier, her mother, I believe, worked, grandmother worked for the county, war of elections, Darlene Richmond is her aunt, or former clerk of the city of Bridston, and I saw her at six o'clock in the morning, and she played, and she was really good, I understand that's all she ever wanted to do since she was a kid, she was born here, she went to Shalit High, she went to play so badly, sent her to Minnesota, so she graduated from Minnesota, and she has played in leagues all around the world, her grandfather, I believe, was Jamaican here, she got her dual citizenship, and now she's playing for the national team of Jamaica, and they did an amazing job, zero-zero score, I didn't get it, I had to look it up, okay, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know soccer or stuff, but it was good, cause everybody was cheering, but I just wanted to make that known, you know, we still talk about our youth in so many things, we often don't know what they're doing. Second thing is, is that, um, Human Services Department is gonna be having its overdose awareness program, and it's a candlelight vigil that's held at the county fairgrounds, it'll be held on August twenty-four, and it starts at six o'clock. If you have not attended this vigil, it's really one of the most moving things that I have, I've attended, particularly in this county, there are people who have suffered, families from members who overdose, passed away, and it's beautifully, it's successfully done, they even use environmentally correct balloons, so it's just amazing, the work that goes into this, uh, prosecutor's offices there, people come out to just commemorate and remember the lives that have been lost through overdose, so if you can make that, it's at the fairgrounds, six o'clock, August twenty-four, and it is, it's really a beautiful , uh, ceremony. Thank you.
I always forget about the library, so that's why I'm gonna bring the library up. So the library just finished its major renovation, it's a, it's, uh, it's changed the way the li- you think of a library, but it still has that traditional feel to it, but it's open to the, chime up anything, anything you wanna say. Our, our director's done a good, a great job, and our, I love, and we don't agree, our, the board is some, really always looking ahead and trying to figure out something new, uh, the Jakes Park, when that comes to front of it, they already have plans how to make that even more special, uh, but we have bigger plans for the library, uh, down the road, you do have a mission, uh, literacy is your mission to lift us, this county is part of a bigger picture, but you have bigger, uh, it's, it's, because we did, I believe we did such a, our director did such a good job, and the staff, that it's opened other windows for us that could add extra to some of our townships, uh, possible, uh, extension to our library system, uh, because we, we attracted attention to how well it was done, and it's well overdue, uh, we're, like, we have our literacy, uh, issues, we're, we're attacking them step by step, we're not letting it go, and I just wanna commend the, our librarian and, uh, director of, uh, direction, she's pushed us in, and, and it's not stopping there either. Um, I also wanna say about the fairgrounds, uh, on several fronts, the, the fair, I thought was very successful, I thought it was, uh, I bebopped around Thursday, most of it, and, uh, we still have the, some peach juice I haven't tasted, my son will let us drink it till he gets back from West Virginia, so, but it's, uh, we, we bebopped around, I think a lot of people had a good time, uh, I got more compliments from how the, the facility looked, uh, it was, uh, the, the little extra flowers, uh, planted, and, uh, the grass trimmed well, the, the walkway, the promenade was very, uh, was very open and inviting. I stopped at one of our employees, I, during, it was the, uh, looking at the bathroom building, uh, and he was, actually, did a bump and beyond, like, he was cha- he, he was, he was there, and I'm looking at him, and I know, and he, he cha- he didn't like anything, told people to get out, that we're not should be in there doing stuff, I mean, he was, had pride in the bathroom, I'm like, this is great, it was just, cause he would do this, so, bouncer the bathroom, and people, and it, and I think people respect that, it was a clean facility, and they were, so, I, I was very impressed, uh, we have bigger things, and I think we just did this on agenda tonight, that the, we're gonna start looking at the, uh, the walk, the, uh, the trails in our northern park, uh, so, it, it's gonna take a while to unravel, but we're slowly and surely taking the plans of the middle, middle park, the, the fairgrounds, the middle park, to develop it into a, a facility that we can be very proud of, and it's basically starting, like, in front of our eyes, so we'll, we'll look, but as time goes on, you're gonna see some special things happen. look, but as time goes on, you're going to see some special things happen in there. Just making sure I don't miss anything here. I appreciate the rotary loudly speak today, I don't know if I cursed them or not, but about the county's progress and what we've done. I bragged about our IT department, how it's measured with actually working together across the entire county. We're working together, and also, I talked about SAIL being involved, I don't know if I said this, but it was in my mind, and so it's really something special, where we're moving forward on all fronts, and I thank the commissioners here for the hard work they do to make this happen, so, so little steps become bigger steps, so. All right, I guess we could move into.
Okay.
Thank you.
Resolution two thousand twenty is five fifty-two. Resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance to the provisions of the New Jersey Senator Byron and Bear Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve, this is to discuss matters related to litigation, possible litigation, contract negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, matters required by law to be confidential, so need a motion in a second.
They have a motion? All favor?
Roll call, roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola. Commissioner Selayo. Deputy Director Rivera?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
And it is eight twenty-three P.M.
There's no action. Just finished, we take it after? We can reschedule.